You don't have to sit down.
Can I turn that off?
It's 7:01, we're a minute late. I'll call the meeting to order. Take your role, please. Melissa?
Present.
Here.
Mr. Collier?
Here.
Mr. Diesel is absent.
He's not there.
Mr. Peterman?
Here.
Here.
Okay. Pledge of the flag. You all rise for the pledge of the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Entertained a motion to improve the minutes from the last meeting.
So move.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Gollum?
Aye.
All right. We are to the point for visitors and communications. If anybody would like to address council on any topic, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you.
And then tell us which one.
Hello, I'm Dr. Mike Ryan, you can probably hear me.
I can hear you.
Bruce Wegman, 90 Winston Hill. Coming before you this evening as the president of Fort Thomas Business Association. As you know, one of the things we're trying to do for our members is the advocates and always looking for ways and opportunities to help them out. The thing I'm curious about and I'd like to just present to the council or ask about is when it comes to our membership and professional services that the city uses, what is the process or how do we go about discussing the process to allow the members of the FDBA to bid on those projects?
Specifically, we're looking at, will the city be able to communicate with the association
so we can put something out to our members to say, "This is an opportunity for you to put in a bid with the city." And I just wanted to get back on record is, what would the steps be that we need to take and then we work on that?
That's a great question. In fact, we just had a conversation in our previous meeting about that potential. There's some things that are required to go out to bid and there's other things that are not required to go out to bid. But certainly, I think we could take an opportunity and say, "Hey, we can put it out to the business association and see if there's anybody in town who has that ability and would want to bid on something for the city." Sure. That's great.
Excellent. We appreciate that. And the only other comment I had, I just want to take this opportunity as the FDBA is to thank you all for the work that you've done on the grow initiative with the incentives program. That is something that our members have been wanting for a long time, so thank you all for that. And we're excited to see what that process looks like when it's ready to roll out and the applications are able to be put in. So we've gotten a lot of feedback so far. People don't really answer us.
Good. That's great. Awesome. Thanks. Would anyone else like to address council tonight? If not, I'm going to skip the reports of officers, guys, and drop down to the new business section to go through the annual reports because those are going to be exciting. So... Well, the other reports will be exciting too. We'll start with the general services and recreation annual report. Kevin?
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. We are going to... Obviously, we have the new media here. We're going to utilize that this year.
Can you be on that one, too?
Our in-house maintenance person.
Oh, really?
Did all this work to bring us this capability, so... I want to start with our volunteer boards. If I stretch some more. The amount of time that was put in by our boards this year is unparalleled. This is just one of the things that makes Fort Thomas great. We have a number of boards that spend a lot of time with incremental parts of the city. So the first one is the planning commission. Most notably here really was the visioning process that we went through to develop the comp plan. These are some of the other things that they've done, which include a couple of zone changes that we had in development plan. But the comprehensive plan, the visioning process that we had, and all the input from the city, citizens, other boards, was just a great step forward for the city. And they played a vital role in that. We move on to the board of adjustment. These are a couple of improvements from the board of adjustment. Drastic changes, wonderful changes for the city. Our board of adjustment's one of our busiest... One of our busiest boards. They literally had a meeting every month last year. And there's some tough cases to decide upon. There's a couple additional cases and they do a great job of really getting out there and dealing and touching these projects and making sure that they are the right thing for the city. The design review board, they also had a busy year this year. One of the most important things that they did was in regards to the Alexander Circle Homes, they analyzed all the requests from the applicant. And here's just a few of the pictures, a few of the improvements that we're going to see up there. Most notably, with the design review board, they started everything from shavings to paint color up there at the Alexander Circle Homes, windows, doors, proposed garages. All that was analyzed and there's still a few things to go, one including the additional home and some fencing, lighting, landscaping, all things that they're going to look at. Design review board also had reviewed some additional signage throughout the city. As you've seen, here's just a few of those examples here. They also take care of the coloration, some of the colors when folks want to change colors of windows in our central business spaces. Some wonderful changes to the city here. Wonderful improvements that have come through there for a while. Another board that we have is the tree commission. They had a wonderful tree event, Arbor Day event, and planted a tree and really had some folks that got into that. Another major project was some tree planting in Villagron that they're still working on. So tree commission is another one that they put a lot of time into the city. As far as activity with the building and general services department, I want to thank our staff. It amazes me how much work comes out of the general services department and I'm proud to be a part of it. One of those things is building activity. We've obviously remained relatively consistent. Some of the things to note here, we have eight single-family homes this year. We were kind of on a trend last year to have some tear down and replacements. I think we had five or six of those last year. This year, we only had two, but we do have a total of eight. And the numbers there for the last couple of years were Villagron, why those numbers were so high, and their single-family units. And they're kind of coming back to where they've always been. So now the Villagron's complete. The strongest part of our programming is remodels and additions in small projects. As a deck, you can see those numbers are pretty high right there and that's really the core of what we do on a daily basis. Here's some of those single families that were issued there.
That's cool.
Beautiful additions to our city. Here's just some of the numbers. Obviously, in 15, 14 and 15, 15 those numbers were a little higher due to Villagron and the numbers kind of leveling back out, some of the actual cost, added cost to the city construction. These are some of those additions and remodels. Once again, some additional... This is the biggest part of what we do and we see some more great additions. Here's some of the commercial improvements to the city. This picture being 15 and 1 Alexander Pike was modified slightly to an office, a series of office, small offices. Among the others listed were additional improvements. Zoning violations stayed relatively the same. The only... The noteworthy thing here is now we, you have approved a code enforcement board and we anticipate getting some of the problems that we do have alleviated a little bit more quickly. So I think as time moves on this year, this is the timing here when folks start getting out in warm weather and this is when the violations start piling in. So people see those and like I said, we'll be able to get a much better handle on those much more quickly with that code enforcement board. We have seen a much more interest in our citywide yard sale. That being said, there's much less yard sales on an individual basis. They aren't gearing up for that yard sale and it shows that those numbers are increasing. Street improvements. This year, we did Petland, Sabre and David. This was a total reconstruct. The main reason, one of the main reasons we did this was due to underground water on these. You noticed the slabs on Petland were up and down and really the only true solution to this street was to totally redo it. And this is why our program was somewhat small this year, only three streets, but when you have a total reconstruct, the costs, the prices go up and that's why we hit a little bit smaller program. This is some of the other projects and improvements that we've done throughout the city. This in particular is a covert on Burnet Bridge. The hillside was slipping there and this was a significant project. It's a pretty neat structure on the right side there. That was the existing structure on the outlet side that was built years and years ago and it's a pretty magnificent structure, hand-built back in the day. We obviously made some additions to that, to the inlet side, to direct water into there. It was getting plumped up and really causing some slipping. So this is one of our major projects performed this year. A few others to note in the general services department. Simple things like installing memorial benches. These are things that actually happen relatively quickly. But you move on to green street realignment. It cleaned up that intersection. The intersection was just large and wide and non-functional and this really cleaned that intersection up. Some of the other pictures there are shown of the tuck pointing on the armory. The soffits and gutters are... Were reconstructed in some cases or fixed. We also did the roof at the mess hall and also tuck pointed at the mess hall as well. This is just a fun one here for a few Christmas decorations. We made some improvements there. Out there, we got a lot of positivity backed up from folks and the city tree sliding across the door of the city building. We have been working cooperatively with sanitation district on cost share programs. The one on the left, Cappy Lane, this is one of those programs that we really are interested in this program and really it's really done good for us. We did last year a couple of these. This year, Cappy Lane, and we also did a program on Petland as part of the Petland's street program. We improved some storm drainage and sanitation district paid for half of it. So these are some things that, in particular, this is one that the contractor actually did some of that work. We actually, our public works crews, did this work on Cappy Lane. So we can really save a lot of money on some of these improvements and really helping folks out with some of the water problems we have. The one on the right there is Main Avenue. It was starting to slide a little bit. We had to do a stabilization project down there.
Wait a minute. Where's the other picture of Main Avenue? That's awesome.
The other picture of Main? Oh, I only have that one.
Oh. With the Elmer's glue in it.
Oh, well, I'm not going to be offended. That was actually Tower Hill from last year.
Oh, was it? That's good.
So this is obviously the crosswalk at Moore. We recently got approval for some additional crosswalks from the state of Kentucky along North Fort Thomas to some of the schools and we're going to be making some of those improvements this year. And that's... That work is all done by our public works crew. As you can see, facility maintenance from a facility maintenance standpoint, this is one of the improvements that was done. Technology in here, I think it's much needed, much overdue, long overdue here in the council chambers, as well as some other small projects that Craig Mount, our facility maintenance supervisor, does. A mouse slot, some additional heating and ventilation. He is a certified electrician and HVAC tech, so he's really done a lot of improvements for the city in that regard.
And a lot of... That's the one I wanted to see.
So...
That's really good.
So that being said... That's not really one of our guys. That being said, I just want to thank everybody else, the other departments, police, fire, jam, all the other folks that really we work collaboratively with every day, fire, finance, everyone that I have a great relationship with and look to continue that relationship. Kat, I'm going to pass it over to Kat to bring up the recreation. In the meantime, while Kat's getting set up there, I did want to mention to the mayor, the mayor has graciously been willing to sign a proclamation for Building Safety Month. I'm not sure if you've got that in front of you. I just wanted to briefly describe that so you don't have to read it. But Building Safety Month, we've done this the last couple of years since I've been here and it simply promotes building safety. We want to promote to the public the need for permits, the need for what we do in this department, code enforcement. We work collaboratively with the fire department. They go out there and they inspect these buildings, commercial buildings annually and we work collaboratively with them on new projects coming into the city. So the fire department ourselves are a vital role in code enforcement and we appreciate the opportunity for the mayor to sign this once again. Just, once again, get the word out to folks, the need for permits and what we do and how important it is. That's all I have this time. Unless you have any questions for me, I'll pass it over to Kat.
There's your signed proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great report. Appreciate it.
Okay, so recreation. I do want to start out by saying 2018, we hired Katie Spicer full-time. Looking back, I don't know what I would do without her. A lot of the things that I come in and I'm like, "What about this?" She's like, "Okay, let's do it." Or I'll go to her and say, "Is this a great new idea?" And she'll say, "Yeah, let's do it." And just see some of that in here. So teeter tots, we split. It's in the winter, so it starts in December and runs to March. This year was kind of a rebuilding year. We did partner with Stretch and Grow and they come once a week. It's a physical education, nutrition and wellness program. And basically, they come in and they bring all kinds of things for kids to do. There's music playing constantly. If you, I'm sure a lot of you have kids in our old teeter tots, it's totally different. It's more structured. They learn about, one week was the heart and they learned about all the muscles in your body that your heart pumps to and they break it down on a level that kids three months can understand. Middle school basketball league. This is all Katie, I will say that. I was on maternity leave, so she did this from start to finish. We brought middle school basketball back. In 2018, it was our first year. We had six teams. There were six weeks of regular play and two weeks of tournament play. We had 42 participants and it was $50 per entry. We provided T-shirts and trophies for the season winner and tournament winner and we had a pizza party at the end of the season. And the ref, he's in the bottom right next to Katie. Steven, he got hit in the face by the knockout winner. I think that's something that everybody looks forward to. But that, I will give all the credit to Katie. And this year, we had kids coming. In 2018, it was all Fort Thomas kids. Now we're having kids from across the county, just from word of mouth, wanting to come and play. And they're wanting to play their school, for their school league, their AAU leagues and for us. Volleyball. Volleyball will never die at the Armory. We have a ton of teams always. We have... Winter is January to March. Last year, we had 55 teams. From May to August is when everything slows down. We only had three teams for our state volleyball. And then our fall, September to December, we had 38 teams. In 2018, we did the middle school expo, so we partnered with the Moms Club. We had about 200 in attendance and it was snowed out the first date, so we had to move it. And then this year, it was the same thing. The first day got snowed out and we had to move it to the next week. And I think if you haven't bid, you need to go. There's so many kids, great kids, neighbors, there's something for everybody. The Easter egg comes again. Last year was the first year that we decided to not put candy in the eggs. We're doing it again this year, which was a blessing so I didn't have to undo 12,000 eggs, pick out the candy for 40 days. So now you'll... The eggs will be spread out. You bring your eggs back to your age group and you get a bag. Police and fire have donated things to go in the bags, coloring books, crayons. Snappy is going to give one free kids pizza with a purchase. So it'll be interesting. I hope everybody likes it and wants to go there. Softball. It's from April to October. It's 14 weeks. Last year, we had 14 teams. It's $310 per entry. And there's a few of the ones. Tennis. We have spring, summer and fall. There was 40 entries in the spring, 25 in the summer and 31 in the fall. We do not charge to play tennis. But we do for the tennis tournament, the Fourth of July, there was 20 entries. We were at Earth Day in 2018 and we made bird heaters. That is Cheerios on pipe cleaners and you can spin them into a circle and hang them on your tree branch and when they eat all the Cheerios, you just add more. How many did... I think we did probably 200 or 300 bird heaters at Earth Day and we're looking forward to Earth Day in this year. Basically, that's it. Tiny Tops Camp. It is, we have five one-week camps starting in June. It's the entire month of June and the first week of July. It's drop-off's at 8:30 and pickup is at 11:30. We limit our participants to 30 a week. 34- to 6-year-olds per week is pretty much our weekend handle. We do have a waiting list and we did add a fifth week. It's a Fourth of July week, so we normally do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and that's It was $45 for residents and $55 for non-residents. Paint and bake came every Monday and then they dropped, there was normally a magnet back off on Friday. There's some of the things that we did. Paint and bake magnets, those are torn paper owls for outdoor week. And then the big picture in the middle is holiday week, which is my personal favorite. So we went trick-or-treating around the park. Julie from general services came out, ate without candy. It's just a nice way to recycle Halloween costumes. You could ask for no math, though, like a thousand. And then in the bottom right corner, we made stuffed animals for animal week and those are his. Who wants to tag that up? There's the Army Reserve. They came up and passed out candy. There they are trick-or-treating at Lloyd Grace's house. I called her and said, "I'm bringing 30 kids to your house if you want to pass out candy." In the middle, we have Honey Hill Petting, Animal Petting Zoo. They come, they are amazing. We use them every single year. And it's amazing to see the kids from the start family get about 30, 45 minutes and it's fun to see them ask questions and engage and trying to convince them that the cow was not a deer. And we also brought all of our campers to Fort Thomas Ice Cream. So they had water day and then went and ate freezing cold ice cream and they loved every single one of them. Ice cream I send in the morning. Mint yoga came. There's more pictures. Right? He thought that was hilarious. And then I showed him the picture and he thought it was even more funny. And then in the middle is Honey Hill. Summer playground program. We have four one-week camps. Drop-off is at 10 and pickup is at 3. The cost is $50 for residents and $60 for non-residents. We had 245 pre-registered and so you can do week by week. You don't have to sign up for the whole summer. And we did have a lot come one week and then ask to come back. So 245 is the pre-registered. And then the fifth week, we have Kent Shields Basketball Camp. We had 120 for that. So there we are at the Army Reserve. Every once, one week per summer, we do here. The Army Reserve is always letting us come and they talk to us and they answer questions. This summer, they piled all the kids into the tank and took them a ride around the parking lot. I'm like, "Well, they sent us five." There's Brooke, Brooke's daughter, in the tank and you can tell she has a little bit of anxiety, like we just cranked all these kids in here. But they loved it. And they... Kids still come up to me and ask if they can drive again. We also send thank you cards overseas and we let them do anything that they draw, anything that they want. We had an egg draft this year. They had to get on teams and make some, make a contraption and we dropped it from various heights. It's kind of like a bracket and if your egg did not bust, you have to move on to the next level. Mint yoga in the park. We went on hikes almost every day and then that's our prime kind of basketball camp for sports week. We also went to the Y and had on Fridays a water day. And then the fire department came and tested out the water culture in the park one day. So we got to play in the park. And then we also painted flower pots and the ones that they did not want to take home, we took to the coroner mayor. And there are seeds in there as well. The library, we partnered with them this year for a lot of things, actually. We had story time in the park and that's coming back again this year. They were at touch a truck. They came to pumpkin walk and they also had their zombie party and art at the Armory. They actually just left the Armory tonight. They did a glass blowing demonstration. So our partnership is getting stronger with the library as well. Great Outdoor Weekend. So Great Outdoor Weekend is just an opportunity for kids and adults to sample outdoor recreation and nature awareness programs in the Cincinnati region. Every fall, there's over 100 events available and they're all free and open to the public. We chose to do a historic walking tour. We partnered with the museum on a Sunday morning and we took a stroll around the park and ended at the museum. And there's her and Jill on the front porch of the museum. I think that needs to be a postpart for the city. We also had a campout and an outdoor cooking class. So we partnered with REI for the cooking class and they came and just did how to cook if you're in the woods or anything. And then we did have our campout. The Lions Club came and did grilled hot dogs. We did have some fire pits and we made smores. We took a night hike and that was led by National Stark Pre-School. And... Um, and they got to listen, um, to animals in the woods and make owl sounds. And then we brought them back and they made s'mores and sang catwalks on the volleyball. Uh, Touch a Truck is just an opportunity for area businesses interacting with the community and for the community to check out what these businesses have to offer. Um, if you haven't been, I suggest that you come. It's just a, a fun time to take kids, great kids, neighbors to see the trucks or vehicles that they see rolling down the road. Um, Police and Fire were there. Uh, Kids and Cribs comes and, uh, does a craft. Um, Marion Typho was there, Rumpy, Northern Kentucky Water, Cincinnati Bell, Duke, the Army Reserve, uh, the Transportation Cabinet. Um, Wilder, Police Department, Wilder Squad. Hilltop Company's brought this brand-new, never-seen concrete truck. Um, he said that he was not going to keep it linked to us next year, that they did have to put it into use. But, um, he let the kids climb in and out and it, it was just, that was one of the big things. Uh, UPS contacted us, actually. They heard their heart and it was so cool, they wanted to be a part of it. Um, Fort Thomas Schools came and brought their bus. Uh, and. Northern Kentucky Water, Fire, Rumpy, Transportation Cabinet. Um, and then new this year was Beavis and Lick Speed Shop. Um, so they brought, uh, rock crawler buggies. Um, and that was, that was fun, that people normally don't get to see or touch or climb in and out of. Yaki Hour was also new this year. We partnered with Braxton Brewing, um, and Dogs to Frogs. If you have an animal that you need help with or walked or fed while you're at work, Dogs to Frogs are your people. I've never met a nicer group. Um, they genuinely care about everything that they do and every animal they come and talk back with. Fort Thomas Ice Creams, there we are again. We love them. They came to Yaki Hour. It was cold, it was rainy, and he still sold ice cream. Uh, Just Bricks, Hot Dogs, and Marty's Waffles were there as well. Uh, we had pet adoptions, um, and a costume contest and, um, Jenga. Life-size. There's Braxton, Marty's Waffles. The lady in the middle came just to get waffles. And I think she might have left with a puppy. Dogs and Frogs, that's easy. We also had a demonstration by, um, the A.I. Unit. Came out and kind of showed us what it was all about. Again, new this year, we had a mountain bike clinic. So you can kind of see their skills course. Um, and it, it was, we're all skilled in all ages. I think that was a good excuse for parents to get out with their kids. Um, so they didn't, might not have looked this silly riding a bike through grass if their kids are doing it too. Um, and, but there was all kinds of things for any skill level. Um, if it was riding through grass or riding over things or, um, the transition from grass to concrete. And then we ended every clinic with, um, with a group bike ride. New this year, we had pickleball. We have two line courts on the lower tennis court. Um, Monday was competitive, the competitive night, and we had seventeen players. Wednesday was recreation and we had fourteen players. Um, and I, the numbers are growing. If you haven't played pickleball, Google it. It's so much fun. Everybody asks me what it is and I just say it's kind of like life-size ping pong. Um, but it's, again, any skill level, if you're just starting out, um, or you're proficient at pickleball. We have something for you. Uh, the farmer's market moved to our parking lot this year. Um, and we love having them. It, every Wednesday, our summer playground program decorated the parking lot, uh, with chalk. So they did farmer, farmer's market, um, themed drawings. Um, and then this year, we, our department left them again and we will have a booth, Recreation will have a booth at every farmer's market. Pumpkin Walk, uh, we did have to move it inside. Uh, the numbers were pretty much the same. I would say around nine hundred, nine fifty came through. Um, we showed Hocus Pocus upstairs on a huge inflatable screen. Um, Maxwell Jump, I called him Friday morning and said, "Hey, can I have a bounce house?" He said, "Sure." So he brought it up for us. Um, this was my first indoor one and I think that it definitely went over really well. Uh, we did give out trophies for the contest winners. Uh, we had fall family sodas that were free. And there were ten categories for the pumpkin carving contest. Um, and every year, we do pizza and pumpkin carving. Um, so that Wednesday, we will, and this year as well, uh, we'll have a pizza party. So all you have to do is call me and let me know that you're coming. And I buy pizza and you come and carve the pumpkins. There's some of our winners. With their trophies and. Yeah, some people go all out. And it's nice because they like to bind their pumpkin on the wall. AKU had a question about our, oh yeah, I should mention that. So all the top, um, are from AKU volunteers. Um, they came and I actually hired two of the girls out of that future. Um, they're just a great group. And then Saint Joe's Eighth Grade came and helped clean up. Eighth grade girls. That says Hocus Pocus. Leading up the stairs. And then that's just, um, the hallway leading back to the game room and the, some of the pumpkins in the meeting room. So Katie and I went to KRPS. I go every year, but we are fortunate enough for Katie to come. Um, it's just, it's Kentucky Parks and Recreation Society. We went to Lake Barclay this year. It's basically a think tank for everyone in the recreation, um, in recreation in the state of Kentucky. Um, it's nice to hear ideas that departments smaller than us have done and larger than us. Uh, Lexington comes and they have a hundred and twenty small employees and they have around a hundred and fifty full-time. So it's nice to, to talk with them and see what works for them. And then, you know, departments that are smaller than us as well. I do realize I have them the same exact clothes. But we had a blast. We learned a lot and, um, it's just a rejuvenation. You get, you get down there and hear what everybody's doing and you want to come back and, and breathe new life into the programs that you have. Uh, the mess hall, we have sixty-seven rentals. That doesn't include any city events, so any concerts, historic society, annual meetings. Um, the fire department did their testing there this year. Um, the police and fire both have their annual youth meeting. Um, so, and that doesn't include, like, the Easter egg contest that was marked, that was canceled. That was reserved. Um, but we are pretty on par for, again, this year. Um, the game room and the meeting room, we are down a little bit from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. And, um, it's, I think it's just because people are renting longer. Um, so we can have multiples during the day. We have a three hour, it's a three-hour minimum. Um, but. Shelters were at two fifty-five for two thousand eighteen. And we do have six shelters. Um, movie nights, we had. The Polar Express, we have decided that we're going to do that every year. Um, we partnered with the fire department and selected booths, um, for the movie. And then we did a typical meet three, we had couple two, and of course, I can say this other is our. Uh, new for two thousand nineteen. Um, like I said, we're partnering with the, the library for even more things. Um, we do have the passport program, um, and I'll pass this around. But it's basically, um, you get a passport from the recreation apartment. And then if you attend these things, um, the native garden, there's all kinds, there's four different adventures. Um, the outdoor adventure, city adventure, the library, and then businesses. Um, but you get a stamp for each place that you visit. You turn it in at the holiday walk and you have a chance to win, uh, prizes at the end of the year. And that's what the Renaissance, um, the president of the, of the board. Tower Tuesdays, I don't know if, if you guys are familiar with Jolly Thursdays at AJ Jolly with Camp and Company Library. Um, we have reused their idea and, um, we're doing Tower Tuesdays. So as of now, we have Circus Mojo, we have Mr. Cow Pie is coming. Um, I think there's some belly dancers that are coming, but we're partnering with the library for that. Um, we are doing outdoor movies this year. Um, we've seen a little bit of a decrease in our winter indoor movies in the Armory. So we're taking it outside this summer, um, and look to, to really bring in more numbers. Um, like I said, we are gonna have a farmer's market booth. And in the passport, you can come to our table and get a, get a stamp for the farmer's market. Kickball, we're doing cup and hand kickball. We're partnering with Braxton, um, on that. And it's for all ages. Um, if you choose to partake, you can, you just have to have something in your cup at all times. Whether you purchase it from Braxton or you put apple juice in it for your kids. You just have to have something in your cup. Um, and we're also doing a trivia night with Braxton at the Armory, or at the mess hall. Um, Fit in the Fort has already kicked off. Um, if you follow us on Facebook, you'll know. Um, basically, it is a challenge for anyone. Um, the weigh-in and kickoff is April twenty-seventh. You come to the Armory, you can, you pay fifty dollars, you weigh in. And then six weeks, you can visit all the businesses that are involved. There's the Y, um, Vibe Fitness, Fit Philosophies, CrossFit Soto, Met Yoga, Planet Fitness. You get a free month of membership through them. Um, and then six weeks later, you come back and you weigh out. And, uh, you gain one prizes, Fitbits, um, new shoes, new running shoes, that kind of thing. Um, so registration is up and on our website and Facebook.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kat.
It's great.
Hello.
Hello.
It's me again. I think this is the thirteenth time, more or less. Um, thank you again for allowing me to share Renaissance and Economic Development with the Area Report of two thousand eighteen. Um, I'm thankful to have my assistant, Sam Shelton. Um, he's very dedicated, hardworking, and it's a pleasure to have him aboard. Um, I'm very grateful for my Renaissance board, Brian Sand and Breckton, Tracy Davis, Mike McDonough, Adam Plow, previously, Patsonic, Heidi Melker, Craig Tweeboos, and Michelle Knight. Um, Frank and Adam have stepped down. And, uh, we have, uh, glad we've taken on Hillary Plow. And, uh, we have another person in mind to take Frank's place. So, um, tonight, I'm really happy to share with you, on the report, you'll see our new Renaissance logo created by the wonderful Patsonic, who you know, uh, did all of the branding work for the Sessas Centennial. And she continues that brand, uh, for our banners and for Renaissance. I'm really happy with this. Um, as you can see, it matches the mural, uh, as well as those military banners that we have up. Most years, I get to come up here and tell you staggering numbers as we, each event has grown. Uh, this year it's a little different. Uh, because as you know, last year's weather just did not cooperate with a lot of things. We did add some things. Uh, we added the, um, St. Elizabeth Cancer Center fundraiser. Um, we tried really hard, but it rained all day long. And, um, even so, we raised twenty-five thousand dollars for the cancer center. Uh, we're going to do it again this year. I think you all were aware of that. We're partnering with them for merch and music. And hopefully, that's going to be very successful. Um, we also added another, uh, concert in October that was supposed to benefit decent fallen soldiers. Uh, that was also a day of downpours and you can just about see the crowd right there. Merch and some music, um, was about the same. Downpour all day, we brought in ten thousand maniacs. They played their part out. Then we had about three, four hundred people under umbrellas. Um, I can remember Mayor Haas asking me how I felt as we sat through that VIP tent. And I said, "Well, I feel about the same as I do when you have eighteen thousand people sitting down there." Just, I was tired. But you could, you do the same amount of blame and it doesn't matter how many people are there. And our Renaissance board was exhausted. Our volunteers were exhausted. We just didn't have the crowd. But it was just one of those years. We were due, I, you know, we, we knew we were due. Uh, the one event it did not rain was July fourth and it was just about one hundred degrees. But at least we expected the heat. The one thing that was pretty suc- successful all summer long was the summer concert series. And we had some great, um, summer concerts. Um, as you may know, we have worked hard to, uh, form some partnerships to help pay for those and to also bring some better fall events. Native Karate Girls is now just about fully paid for, um, by Crawford Insurance and what was formerly United Bank, now West Bay Hope. Uh, they do that on behalf of the Brighton Center. It was a fun event. Northern Kentucky Legends Concert is also free to us and Pea Jeeping last year was also free. The food trucks and the beer also pay sponsorships to be there. And I'll just, I'm gonna move a couple of things here so I don't throw up in front of all of you. Earth Day was actually a program sponsored by Forest Conservancy. It was my honor to assist them. That was an amazing event. Uh, I think a lot of you were there. Uh, we had two to three thousand people, I'm really not sure, but it was a great day. And I'm very proud to be able to help them again. And as Kat mentioned, they're also involved. Last year was a great year for opening new businesses. Grass Roots and Vine, um, was a, a big hit. Uh, Fort Thomas Ice Cream, uh, Herman's Kitchen opened, Just Sew, and Public House. Just Sew is an interesting new business. Um, one wouldn't think that that tiny little fabric store would be such a hit. But anytime you go in there, it's full. It's a destination business because women who coiled women who sew will go anywhere to find that kind of business. And it is full of women. Every day, classes are going on. It's, I'm pretty excited to watch this develop. I'd like to go back to these businesses. This is the before and after of Kyle and Chris's two buildings that they poured their heart and soul into. These, the renovation of these two buildings transformed the Midway District. Um, I've got to tell you, I worked for years trying to find, trying to buy them, number one. Trying to find someone to buy them. And it was, it was a really difficult thing. Um, some of you know the story. Um, once we finally were able to get our hands on them and Kyle and Chris bought them, they, they were one of those projects that just kept taking more and more money. We were very thankful that they were able to take advantage of the city's tax. Um, so we're, we're really proud of what happened as a result of, um, that, that money savings program. A bit outside of my normal official duties, in October, I was honored to be asked to plan Colonel Dean's funeral. Uh, he'll be forever missed. Uh, in my years here, we've only lost two business leaders, Patrick Casey and of course, Colonel Dean. Our business, our town takes a huge hit when we lose its kind of personalities, and, um, it'll take a long time to recover from that. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to attend the National Main Street Conference. You may remember that we dropped out of the Kentucky Main Street program for a lot of different reasons. The national is the best of the best in the nation. For learning whatever you wanna learn, um, we, we learned some great stuff last year. Our banner program came from, um, that conference. Uh, the facade grant idea came from that conference. Uh, and I want to thank you for allowing me to go last year, and then I'll be going next year to see, for next week, to Seattle, and actually, Kim Reckton is paying her way through this way. She's our new, our new Renaissance chair. We have lots to be proud of, as you think back to that Veterans Day program that's Chargers of Freedom, I can only thank Adam Plow, his part in that. Um, Adam is very passionate about that Veterans Day program. The Veterans Day banners were hung at that meeting. We have now sold eighty-two of those, but orders come in every single day, and it is probably one of the most successful Veterans Renaissance's done. I am really grateful to Kathy Sonic for making that program very for Thomas. Um, our local Army Reserve unit actually came to my office and asked if they could also now participate in the year. So I'm, I'm very excited about that. Um, the museum has really grown significantly in the past year. Dan Abinfe took charge as coordinator, the glory assist for the Capitol. And we've had a lot of substantial donations of artifacts that have come in, that it's just gonna make our museum the first rate. Um, we really do need to double or plan, probably double. Uh, I am transcribing some, um, notes, handwritten notes that have been given to us, some of you probably remember Ben Speckman. Um, he was before my time, but, uh, his family has given me quite a bit of information that he wrote out. Um, I was also given a CD of handwritten notes from the whole grand murder trial, every single page from the, uh, court bedroom of the Matt trial. You may remember the Highland students who, uh, read the letters at the Chargers of Freedom, uh, for Veterans Day. Um, we were also given some things from the family of Cordelia Cook, uh, as she wrote her own biography. Um, we're really grateful to Seth Frost, who graduated from Highland, who's now June at Northern Kentucky University, who plans to get his master's in public history. Seth has been volunteering ten hours a week, and he is cataloging all of our artifacts into the past perfect software. Uh, he's very dedicated and quite frankly, I don't know how he's doing, but he's also a student, but he, he's the quietest young man I've ever met, but boy, is he diligent. Um, I mentioned Cordelia Cook. This is an amazing story. I was researching something completely different and surprisingly saw her name and saw that she was a nineteen thirty-eight graduate of Fort Thomas Highland High School. She is the first woman in American history to receive both Purple Heart and the Bronze Star. She, um, was the daughter of Louis Cook and his wife Nevada. The Nevada building is named after her in a way. Louis Cook was a forty-five-year veteran, first police chief of Fort Thomas, first fire chief, first road supervisor, and first tax collector. Um, Cordelia was born right where this building stands. Her father, um, was also the father of Henry Cook, who was the U.S. District Attorney, who defended Raderman and the Committee five hundred back in the eighties of the war. Um, we thank goodness Jeff Bezos' family, um, Brandon Cook, I believe is his nephew, led us to Michael Caron Cook, who led us to Cordelia's son, Bill, who lives in Westchester, who now, who left, who brought us, my entire office was filled with memorabilia of Cordelia, framed artifacts beautifully displayed, and now at our museum. Um, it's, it's kind of an incredible story, and it's gonna be incredibly displayed for world to see. Um, the General Thomas statue, as you know, the fundraising continues, we're more than a third of the way there, and it will be installed at the Douglas Center, it's to park in the next year. Art Around Town, oops, I got lost. Art Around Town has continued to be a great success. We made some good tweaks last year. Um, the farmer's market, uh, could not have gone better after the move, as you may recall. That move was pretty quickly done, uh, though our number of patrons was down slightly because we had four downpours and, uh, had canceled. Uh, the dollars spent were actually up, which is kind of interesting. Members of our board also spent a day in Dayton, Ohio, looking over how, uh, train depot was being used to have end-to-end market, and we got a lot of ideas for the future of our market. Um, I worked with Danielle from CT Consulting to obtain, uh, a grant that is worth tax credits for the Met Ball and Armory. And, uh, we received fifty-four thousand, three hundred and one dollars and nine cents as a result of that three hundred. So, um, we'll be selling those, um, to Stockyard Bay to get that money for the city, and I'm pretty excited about that. I also wrote a grant to BB and T to obtain funding for the Forest Conservancy cleanup, um, the Native American, uh, Native Guard that they have at the, um, museum. Worked on the Seersucker Bifry that we had April twenty-ninth, and we had a really good turnout for that, we had two, three hundred. Uh, I also spent a lot of time envisioning meetings and helping to cite, uh, my uncle Ted Bundy, Zach Efrain, and that was fun. Not, I hate to mention it, but Zach Efrain actually touched my elbow. Um, I spent a lot of time, um, with four companies looking for property, two thousand square feet for each one of them, trying to locate them here at Fort Thomas. We spent weeks and sadly had to watch them go to other cities. Um, that is probably the hardest thing about my job, is wanting so badly to live in here and not being able to do so because of our lack of property. Um, I was lucky to see one of my former junior Renaissance students, Eric Gunn, stand before seventy of the Campbell County Historic Society people and tell the story of the Altamont Hotel that day. That is strong. I get to watch Sam Shelton now come back and work for me, another former junior Renaissance camper, who is now going to lead a junior Renaissance camp this summer. And finally, I am really, really proud of our facade grant that we've worked on for the past year. Um, nine drafts later, and I think we're here. Um, this facade grant is gonna be a game changer for a lot of businesses. I've had four businesses come in the last few months, and, you know, we'd really like to take advantage of this. Um, thank you so much for looking at it, for working with us, for trying to help us quickly set it to the degree as good as we can possibly get it at this point, and I hope to goodness that our businesses will also take advantage of our new season of progress. Thank you for making it possible for me to work for our business community and for the city. Um, I'm looking forward to making some announcements in the next couple of months about some good economic development projects. Um, we have a lot to do to really change the vitality of Fort Thomas. It would've been a pleasure and a pleasure to follow.
Great, thank you, Ed. Well, those are great reports, very good stuff. Exciting things happening in the city. Any questions from, about any council or comments?
I have one, that the facade program, is that we putting it out there so people know? Is it being promoted, is there like a website, or?
We just had, that was the meeting prior to this, so that'll come up later in our reports. Good meeting. All right, um, see, why don't we finish out, should we finish out new business or go back to the monthly reports? All right. Fire Department. Caught you off guard, didn't I, Chief?
Thank you, our officer from council, uh, uh, basically, I don't have anything to add to the, uh, February monthly report that was, uh, I guess on your computers. Uh, but I did have three things I just kinda wanted to touch base on and, and make you aware of. Number one, FEMA is starting to review the grants up there, uh, the AMP grants, uh, they, they tell us that, uh, they're projected to start releasing those around April one. Of course, as you well know, we have, uh, a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar radio grant out there for seven, eight-hundred radios, uh, the city route for basically all Campbell County fire protection wise, so keeping our fingers crossed on that, along with a couple of city grants that we have, uh, put in there in the FEMA process also. So we'll keep you apprised of those, but, uh, again, uh, those are starting to turn around now, I guess we'll be closer to April one, uh, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. Um, wanted to let you also know that, uh, whether you're aware or not, we make a lot of transfer runs out of, out of, uh, St. Elizabeth Fort Thomas for them. Uh, this, uh, Fire Department's done that for years, uh, many, many years, and, uh, when they need a transfer run out of there, they'll, they'll contact us and, and our squad will make that, whether it be to another St. Elizabeth facility or even across the river. Um, we had a ventilator on the ambulance that, uh, basically, uh, when we make those transfer runs, that's the piece of equipment that we tend to use a lot of, or use the most, and, uh, the ventilator went down, so we were able to reach an agreement, and St. Elizabeth is providing us what they do ventilator. So about a thousand-dollar ventilator, so we're, we're down on the ambulance, and we thank, uh, St. Elizabeth and, uh, the, uh, ED nurse manager that I worked with and, uh, our people worked through, as well as, of course, their vice presidents, uh, vice president over here. So again, uh, very important piece of equipment, and we were able to replace it through them, and we thank them a lot. And, uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention to you is I put in front of you at your spot tonight, uh, an item called Smart 911. And I kinda wanna just read to you what Melissa, I brought this up at the staff meeting, uh, a week or so ago with Mr. Bill, and I was wanting to kinda, I, I looked on a webpage today, and if you haven't had a chance to read that, I'm just gonna read what Melissa put on there because it really kinda says it to the best of our abilities, and then I'll explain it. Over at, "Today, 911 can't find you. Over eighty percent of the calls made in 911 come from mobile phones. When you dial 911 from a mobile phone, the 911 call takers have very little information to help you, only your phone number and a very general sense of, of where your location is. This could be a serious problem, obviously, in the emergency, on seconds count, particularly if you or your loved ones have medical conditions or are unable to speak, incapacitated in an accident, or whatever the case may be." Uh, Chief Gilmore and I sit on the Campbell County Dispatch Board and are very proud to represent the city of Fort Thomas on that board. Um, and so, uh, again, this is something that, uh, that we, that we have started, uh, in Campbell County, uh, through that dispatch board, and we recommend that you and your families, uh, sign up for what's called Smart 911. Go to smart911.com, it's got information you can fill out about your cell phones, about your personal, um, uh, personal history, as much or as little as you want to give them on the information. It's very easy to sign up, uh, you put your contacts, your emergency contacts down, uh, anything history-wise on your, on your history, uh, medical history, et cetera, on yourself. And along with another app that Campbell County Dispatch has, which is called Rapid SOS, they can find you. So, uh, a couple of examples, one is a, a year or so ago, uh, an elderly couple in Bellevue, thought they went down the street to, to the supermarket, and, uh, nine one, and Campbell County Dispatch couldn't find them, they were located in Boone County.
Oh, my God.
They drove to Boone County and didn't know it. So I just see it, this is an insurance policy that's free, uh, I just think it's a, a good idea to go online and look at it and, and recommend that to the community also, to sign up for Smart 911. Again, Chief Gilmore and I are very adamant about this, and, uh, again, with Rapid SOS, we will find you in the event of emergency. And, uh, we had that incident not too long ago across the river, and I, this is one that we don't want, we want to avert and not have again, uh, in, in our lifetime. So I recommend that, I put out a flyer, as long as I said to the, uh, to the staff meeting list, uh, we could, Mr. Bill, Mr. Ewol, and, uh, yeah, I think Chief, if you've got anything to add to it, please feel free, but I think it's something that we're very adamant about. Just take a minute and take a look at it, see if you like it, sign up, and I think it's a great insurance policy. With that, I can answer any questions about anything I mentioned and/or anything in the monthly report. Uh, again, we'll forward our annual report next, uh, next month, and, uh, it'll be tough to follow those, those through right there, so.
Really.
Again, ready to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, requests?
Could, would it be possible to forward this by email so that we can then forward it to other people?
Yes, okay, that, do you have that on the, since it's on the website?
It's on the website. Okay. I can stand this.
She can stand, yeah, I was, I was making whatever we need to, uh, Mr. Peterman, because again, I know you're, you're adamant too about the dispatch board, so again, that's, again, where we need to do is, and again, I thank Mr. Bill for allowing us to bring it up, I think it's really important.
Pretty easy to put it on our social media, links, it's on our social media already.
And I'll tell you, you can do it on your cell phones, sign up for it, but it's a lot easier if you use it off of a desktop or a, a tablet or something, just easier because the screen's bigger, but if you go through there and answer it as much as, give them as much information as you want that they'll store, and then when they, they need you with that Rapid SOS, they'll find you, they'll be able to tell you, then, these medical conditions, or again, next of emergency contact situations, et cetera, so.
I can hear the passion in your voice about this particular, I love it, and you're gonna tell you believe it, for sure.
I really am, and I know Chief Gilmore is the same, um, 'cause we, we want to avert the ban symmetries, I believe that.
I'll entertain the motion.
Move to receive and file.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
We'll call, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, Police Department Monthly Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just hit a couple highlights from our monthly report. Uh, first, Officer SRO Zach Rolford was able to teach in front of a class with, uh, Ruth Moyer, fifth graders, he talked about the Bill of Rights, so, uh, anytime we can get those kids to listen, we're happy to put someone in front of them to talk about police-related stuff. Um, second, all of our police officers went through CPR and first aid training in the month of February. That's a two-year certification, and our, our Fire Department did all the training and education for us, so they always keep it very interesting and, and very fun, so it's a good two, three hours for us to get recertified on that, and we're good for another two years. And then finally, I'd just like to mention that we got a thank you letter from the Fort Thomas Moms Club for participating in their second annual expo and fundraiser. So it's always nice to get those letters, and we're happy to be down there helping out with, with that group. Those are all the highlights for us, happy to answer any questions.
Great, any questions, comments for the chief? Entertained the motion?
Move to receive and file.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, we'll call both, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
Okay, now down to new business, consideration memorandum of understanding for U.S. Twenty-Seven Corridor. Okay. Um, oh, your report, I'm sorry. Oh, your report, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I didn't want to hear your report. So I just skipped right on your end.
Hey, we've had great reports, so there's no way I can match up where we've been tonight. But I do just have a couple of things that I'll mention.
Okay, my apologies.
No, it's no problem. First of all, thank, thank you for members of staff that are here. You may not believe this, but when we have our staff meetings and we say you have to do annual reports, they don't all jump up and down and say, "Let me do it first." As you can tell, they're really busy every day and it's really kind of cool to see how much we actually do on an ongoing basis. And I think a lot of people lose sight of that sometimes. There's a lot of activity that's done inside these walls and these folks are doing most of it. So great effort, y'all did great. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Just a couple of things to update on. The pedestrian safety initiative, we did get our first beacon crosswalk in. I know everybody's tired of hearing this, but I want to talk about it every meeting because it's really important to our community. We did have the installation at North Fort Thomas and Memorial Parkway down the street. That was kind of the low-hanging fruit because the bump outs were already there. We are looking at the possibility of putting the beacon in front of the high school. Similarly, we only have one bump out at that location. We're hopeful that we can do that during spring break. If not, they will be scheduled with the other two locations, which is at St. Thomas and at the middle school. And they will be done sometime over the summer before next school year. The other item on that is Johnson Elementary. If you've not been by the high school campus, it looks a little crowded and different up there because Johnson Elementary will be attending school there after spring break, so the second week in April. We've had a series of meetings with our safety department and myself with the superintendent, looking at all of those items that will be part of the transition that'll occur. So for the community, a little bit of growing pains. They've done a lot of work at the district level identifying what they can do to make it as palatable to the traveling public as it can possibly be. I think they have a great plan. They've spent a lot of time. They've communicated with the city. There's alternate starting times and departure times from the schools between the elementary school and the high school. There is a bus route that'll run the north end of town. Those stops are identified. They've communicated all those things to their, to their families. So our police department will have a big presence, particularly in the week leading into, out of spring break. And then we may have to make some adjustments based on what's going on in the community. So really important to our community, obviously, we have just a limited travel path. So everybody, you know, plan the time, make the effort and be nice. So at the level that you can. Just a couple of other things. The North Fort Thomas Avenue sidewalk is beginning with the water main replacement is scheduled for April 1. I know Kevin was at pre-construction meeting. So that project will kick off April 1. Kevin, do we send the letters out for that?
The water main's getting those out and they're, they're to go out very soon. I think they start dates everyone wants, so they should, they should be one.
Did we send our letter to? Our eight-date letter? The, the letter where we were telling them the schedule? Anyway, we, at, the process that we're at right now is, for the sidewalk program, is the acquisition of easements that are necessary. There's three or four permanent easements and then construction easements. So there's a separate company that'll be obtaining those. So we're, we're still proceeding with our project. But obviously, the water main is the first part through and that'll, that'll be done at the first part of summer. And then the last item to update is Alexander Circle Homes. If you've been up there, please don't walk back there, but you can see it from a distance. They're still having issues with people walking back in there. I mean, it is a full construction site at this point. They are finishing the sanitary sewer. The water main is run all the way back to there from the avenue. And as soon as the sewer is in, then they'll be placing the back section of the water main. Duke Energy is scheduled to follow that. The street widening that the city is doing by the ball field will occur probably around May the 1st. And obviously, they're working on all the homes. They are still on schedule to do first move-ins as early as July of this year. So that project is very much a construction site. But it's a great project and they're having a lot of success. You heard the activity from, you know, our designer review board, but they are marching full forward ahead on that project. So we're very happy with the progress and this is a great time of year to have everything torn out before we start using our parks at full capacity. And that's all I had.
Awesome. My apologies for skipping over you. So now back down to new business, consideration memorandum, memorandum of understanding for the U.S. 27 corridor. That's in here someplace, is it not?
It is.
Finding it. Getting used to finding this stuff.
This is really what has sprung from our, our visioning process and our community plan. As you all know, we, we had a different approach and we did six separate committees and we had great input from the community. And something that's a little out of the ordinary from a typical comprehensive plan update is the section that we created, which was regional collaboration. I know Debbie was part of that group. And out of that, we made a lot of contacts with neighboring communities when we were doing those types of studies in our community plan. And from that, we found a lot of common ground with a lot of our neighboring communities and extended that to other partners. And really, Will Weber's here with Campbell County. If you don't know Will, he's their economic development director as well for your Campbell County Fiscal Court. Will is working with the communities that we are working with, which would be Highland Heights, South Gate and the city of Newport. And we have informally, really over the last probably nine months, met about monthly, dealing with just the concepts of what it means to traverse the U.S. 27 corridor, look at opportunities for collaboration that would allow us to have a stronger voice with perhaps transportation elements of that corridor, looking at streetscape possibilities, looking at economic development, looking at smart growth, and then leveraging those things as a group. The byproduct of that is we've been able to open a lot of conversation about what's going on in our neighboring communities. And sharing that information leads to other discussion. We've taken on partners with NKU and OKI and Saint Ease. Am I missing anybody, Will?
South Bank.
South Bank, yes. So all those entities have joined in the conversation. And if you really think about the concept of the U.S. 27 corridor from really the levee, which is an entertainment district to Northern Kentucky University, that whole section traverses through the cities I just mentioned. There's a lot of opportunities there. There's a lot of, and we heard a lot of exploration of that in our community plan, not just from regional collaboration, but with our zoning and other aspects of what we talked about, transportation. I think almost every committee had conversation about the U.S. 27 corridor. We're really excited about working with our neighboring partners. And what we've done is actually formalize that. That's the long version to get you to where you are tonight. We drafted an MOU, thank you, Will Weber. Will has kind of spearheaded our group to keep us all organized unofficially, officially. And we appreciate his effort. But we are basically at a point where we're writing a memorandum of understanding between all the entities that outlines all the issues of how we would work together. And it's really something that we've already taken off with. But formalizing it allows us to have that, that common voice so that when we approach other groups and agencies for opportunities for grants, whether it's OKI or other transportation grants, whether we're just having conversation with the transportation department, for example, the resurfacing portions of 27 this year, talking about some of the restoration of medians and perhaps planning them down at the interchange at 471 and U.S. 27, for example, similar to what was done at Grant Avenue. All those little things from that to something much larger is the focus of the group. I know that Adam attended one of the meetings. So we're really excited about where it could lead. So we're asking council to endorse our, as a city, participation with that group in a formal sense under the terms of the MOU and having the mayor authorized to sign the resolution to reflect the same. Not unlike the fact that it kind of originated from, from our, our activity. We're also the very first city to consider the MOU for adoption, although everyone else is on board and we're very excited about where it might all lead, so.
I think it's great. Will, do you have anything you want to add to it?
Ron hit the nail on the head. It's an excellent opportunity for several cities and different counties to collaborate on a common initiative and apply that Fort Thomas, State of the Rain, up for adoption.
And I really appreciate what you're doing to pull all the cities together. That's, that's so important to make something like this happen so it just doesn't get pushed to the side. Because there are some exciting things that can happen with it, so that's great. Any questions on council?
I'd have, I have to admit, when, when I went to the meeting, it was pretty impressive. You know, the regional collaboration out, you know, not only do they, they take everybody's individuality to, Will was very good about working the room and make sure that everybody's in the, you know, they want everybody in the same book and that's, and so in the same chapter. So everybody keeps their individual attributes that they have for every city, you know, and they can just act like play on each other. It's pretty impressive for 27 back to life too, so, you know, nice job, Will. Ron, thanks for including me in that because I came on to that particular chapter a little late after it had already been discussed last year. So it's pretty impressive.
Good, good. Thanks. A couple, I'm, I do this kind of work, so a couple of legal things. So Will, I mean, eventually, it seems like you're going to want an actual interlocal cooperation agreement where you can save, share funding and participate in these ventures that are across city lines. Is that, you think that's just down the line that you would do that as opposed to this early stage?
That, that'd be correct. It sounds like a separate document. The MOU in front of you is put together by County Attorney ComEd, so it's a city county program. But it is the step in the right direction for that, their local agreement. If there's any funds or participation from any of the partners, that'd be a subsequent agreement at that time.
That would be done later.
This allows us to have a dog in the fight, if you will, to.
Well, no, I mean, it's a statement of, you know, what we want to see happen. I think that's, that's great, yeah. So these are supposed to be recorded, so it needs to have notary and a preparation certificate. And I actually think you get these approved by DLG because it's just the cities and counties, not, not the AG. That's if you have other than cities and counties, there's a couple of technical things.
And Will's taking care of all that.
Okay.
These are, these are glue, for sure, yeah.
Any other comments, questions?
Was it mentioned out loud who the participants were? We should say that for public consumption.
Yes. The partners?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the city partners are the city of Newport, city of South Gate, city of Fort Thomas and city of Highland Heights and Campbell County Fiscal Court. And the outside partners are non-municipalities, if you will. And some of the, most of them are just by agreement. It's St. Elizabeth, Northern Kentucky University, OKI, regional government and... South Bank. Yes. So we have a big group and a lot of excitement about what the possibilities are and great partners. Yeah. And that group will grow.
Yeah, and Fort Thomas is, is part, speaking of South Bank, another interlocal cooperation agreement for development, which is South Bank, South Bank Partners. So I think, you know, we're, but I think it's really a great way to serve the city with these inter, intercooperative agreements.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? We'll call both.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Actually, we have a resolution we need to build on later, so that's good. Okay. Now, I'm really confused. Okay. We've, okay, now we're down to report a committee's report from recreation. Jeff Beazle. I can't hear him. Can you tell him to speak up?
I will be speaking for Mr. Beazle.
Oh, okay. He's very disappointed not to be there.
He is very disappointed in not being able to be at this meeting.
Jeff is very excited about recreation. He had to be in Denver this week for business and he is so upset that he couldn't be here. So we talked about actually getting him online and, and having him talk via this, but nah, we're not going to do that.
So in his stead, I will be reporting for the Recreation Standing Committee of Council, which is also the Parks and Open Space Committee. As you all know, we are meeting regularly with our, our committees as an implementation portion of our community plan. This particular committee has met on two occasions. We are posting all of our summaries on our FTCommunityPlan.com website so people can track activities in this regard. And so reporting out, the first thing I think Debbie mentioned in her report, that the committee did have referral of the locations. You all saw presentation at the last meeting about the possible locations in Tower Park for the statue of the General Thomas. And after reviewing the, the fundraising committee and meeting with the sponsor and reviewing all the locations, they did recommend to the council committee the location at the top of, and do we have a, do we have a copy of that, Melissa? The location at the entrance opposite Tower Park. And the committee is recommending that. And I don't know that we need official action on that or does council want to acknowledge that in some way? But it's this location right here at the opposite side of the tower where the plaza would be constructed. Yes. And so that is the preferred and recommended location. So we will be proceeding with that location. So that was first order of business. And again, I don't know if council wants to do any formal action or, I mean, you referred it to committee. That was the recommendation at a committee. We just want to acknowledge it at the end of the report, accept the report.
Formally accept the recommendation.
So we can just accept it with the report at the end. So the continuation of discussion from their first meeting, staff will be looking at specific outdoor exercise equipment. We reviewed costs. We reviewed potential locations in Roster Park and Tower Park. So we'll be bringing those forward as a possible inclusion into this year's budget for that. The, Melissa, if you could pull up, the, probably the largest item that was under conversation at this meeting had to do with shelter number three in Tower Park. And we did a concept plan. We worked with Chris Manning. We did some scale version of that. And there it is, right there. So this concept was approved and is being recommended for funding. Just to orient you from left to right, you're looking, well, I should say, at the top of the page would be the VA hospital. And then to the left side of this would be the daycare building and of course, this would be the soccer field. The existing basketball court is right in the middle. We had budgeted, in this budget, to resurface those. However, this area was under study in the community plan. There were recommendations to make improvements. So this concept is being brought forward as a, as a recommended approved project to be included in the budget. The improvements include, and I'll just cover them really quickly, and we'll be posting all this online. But the parking lot will have improvements. There'll be a lot of tree planting that you can see on the perimeters and down near the basketball courts, trying to create shade between the amenities that are there. There'll be a reconfiguration of the sand volleyball court as far as the orientation. The number five that you see in the middle is the severely deteriorated stairs that lead to nowhere. That is not the stairway to heaven. So it is disappearing and the wall will be run in front of it. The new shelter would be constructed of a similar design to match the ones in the other parks. It will not be as large and it will not be quite as grand, but it'll be a lot better than what is there. It'll be oriented correctly. There'll be, the item number three coming across is an access drive that will get to the shelter. Currently, you have to walk everything to the shelter. So there'll be handicap parking. There'll be additional parking spaces available for users of that shelter. The play area to the right will be enhanced to include an all-inclusive surface area, number 11. That's the rubberized surface that's completely accessible. And then 12 is an expansion of that play area with nature play. And then 12 is an expansion of that play area with nature play that abuts adjacent to the woods. You can see the line on there is the existing easement line of the conservation zone, so it does not encroach in there. And for the committee, we did get five additional parking spaces at number 13 from when it was in committee. And number one is important, but not very glamorous, and that's the port-alet enclosure that's important to the users there. So that is, and obviously, there's benches and plantings. I didn't mention number seven is a bocce court, so we can have leagues.
Cool.
So that is being presented for consideration and approval. We talked about the practice field availability. A lot of our projects are getting to, and some of the concepts in the plan are affecting potentially some of the practice field areas. So we've had a couple of conversations in that committee about potentially getting turf field areas for practice facilities that certainly allows an extended play. The maintenance of those become an issue when they're used every season, so that is something that would require outside partners. And I think you may hear more of that from some of our partners in the community who have interest in that. And then the last item is the Highland Park James Avenue. And basically, it was agreed that the sand volleyball courts and the basketball court, which were modified a number of years ago, really have not, they're an underutilized amenity in that park, in large part because of the obscure location. Our sand volleyball leagues are not strong enough to have a need for the size and the number that we have. And it really was a reuse of the old tennis courts that were in disrepair and also not being used. The plan calls for that area to have some grading in it. We have opportunities to receive suitable fill materials. So it was agreed that at this time, moving toward the community plan, that we would start to accept fill material in that area after removing those fence lines that are older than I am, and the underutilized amenities that are there as well, in an effort to get closer to matching what's indicated in the community plan. So, obviously, that process will take trucks being brought in. We'll control that location completely, as far as when that might occur and at what level and who has access to that. It's not something we're just going to jump into, but we will control that process. But that is all part of what's recommended out of that committee. So they've been very active. That is their report. Jeff, you did a great job.
Yeah.
And so, really, you just need to acknowledge that report with all those activities. And I think by that, you will be approving the location of the General Thomas statue as well, unless anybody has any question.
So what's the net parking spaces at that? Do we gain or lose?
Oh, we gain.
Oh, okay.
Right now, that's all just kind of a sea of pavement, and they're not really designated very well.
Yeah.
And so, I think you can get like eight or nine cars, maybe, if everybody does the right thing without, by accident. So I think it's designed now, I don't know if there's...
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
About a dozen over here, and ten more over there, so, yeah. Probably adding about 12 spaces, of functional usable spaces.
All right, I'm going to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Exciting stuff. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
All right.
Excellent. Report from Law, Labor, and License.
The Law, Labor, License Committee met today before council at 6:15. I'm the chair, as long as council member Peterman and council member Collier. We have three topics on our agenda tonight. The first was a review of the Uniform Landlord-Tenant Act. If you were here for last month's council meeting, you may remember Judge Cameron Blau, Adam's brother, came and introduced the Act to council. What we learned is that most cities in Campbell County currently have this act in place, as well as most cities in the state of Kentucky. What the Act does, and we'll actually have a first reading later tonight, is that it provides rights and obligations for both the landlord and the tenant. I think that was important for council, to make sure that both sides were protected in this act. So the recommendation was to proceed with the first reading tonight by council. The next topic was exciting, and that's the Grow Grant. Debbie has a lot of work on this for the Renaissance Board. I know, I think Heidi, Michelle, and Hillary did a lot of work on this as well. So the idea behind this is actually pretty cool. So maybe you probably seen this huge tower behind Cityville in here. Well, on this tower, we actually lease space to certain telecommunications companies, and that generates a revenue of about $60,000 per year. So the idea was, is that to take this revenue from the tower and apply it to beautification of the city, especially in our business districts. So through Debbie and through the Renaissance Board, what they've done is they've created a grant program. And what this grant program will entail is if you're a small business in Fort Thomas, you can apply for matching funds from this grant. Every year, the money is replenished in this pot, and let's say you want to do new windows, new doors, new signage, you can apply to the committee, and they will reward you based on your application. We had a lot of discussion about, you know, what's the purpose behind this, how much money should we dedicate towards this, and what's the true goal? And we kind of decided that really what the true goal was, was exterior facade improvement, as well as to potentially attract and retain our existing small businesses. I think it really, hopefully, helps Debbie out a little bit on that, on her job. So there's no official action for council at this point, but I think at some point in the future, there will be a vote, probably in the Finance Committee, to approve those funds for that specific project. And the last was the city communication practices. It's kind of been, as you heard a lot over the couple of months, it's kind of been our ongoing topic on city council, and that's how really to improve communication to our residents. I know it's been a hot topic over the last year here. And what's great about this being before today's council is that Mark Collier actually produced a very nice communications plan, and it focused on several main areas. Tonight, we were only able to discuss one small area, and that was improvement to the city's website. So Mark actually surveyed some of our peer communities, Fort Mitchell, I think maybe some other river cities as well, and saw who has the best practices for communication to the city, and really, Mark liked Fort Mitchell's website. So the recommendation from council tonight, from our committee, was to move forward, at least with the receiving bids for improvement of the website, probably a whole redesign of the city website. So I think, hopefully, in the first half of the year here, we're going to see a new website. And the idea was to have it, be able to better maintain it, better update it, have a calendar, have more information on it, easily, more easily accessible. So that is the report of the Law, Labor, and License Committee.
Excellent. Good job. All right.
Mayor, one other committee matter, I didn't notice on here, ask Ron. There's a Finance Committee meeting, and we approved the audit, and that was included in packets, but there doesn't seem to be, I would think that council would accept that audit? Should we do that?
That should be on the agenda. If not, you're not.
I don't know if we've actually voted on the audit.
No. Yeah, it's not acceptance of the audit, it's the...
Well, I mean, I think we need to, actually.
That sounds like a great idea.
Really? You've never done that?
Not at all.
I mean, it's our audit. I mean, auditors prepare it, but it's our audit, it's our report. So I guess I'm surprised we haven't done that before.
Well, I think it would be great for you to make a motion.
There is a, but there's a report that goes with that, and that is that the Finance Committee did receive a report from our independent auditors, and that, and we were given a clean audit, you know, no exceptions to it, which is the standard, of course, anyone will achieve. And, you know, the financial condition of the city is sound, as reported by the auditors, so therefore, the Finance Committee would recommend adoption of it. I'll make that motion.
That sounds like a great motion. Someone like to second that?
Second.
Any discussion? Further discussion?
I'm a little confused here, so I'm accepting something and voting on something that I haven't seen.
It's in your computer. The entire audit is in there.
Oh, the entire, so I'm supposed to go through this.
So Roger...
I mean, if you want to look at it, we can delay it, but I really do think we ought to have...
I trust you guys, much as that goes, but it's...
And really, that's why it comes out of committee. Committee reviews and...
I'll just do it afterwards, since we're in the middle of this.
Yeah, we went through it very thoroughly with our audit.
One, one point that I wanted to ask, so that position that we were in from last year to this year, where it was 14 million in surplus, down to 10, majority of that went to pension contribution. Do you foresee that continuing that trend? They talk about that at all?
Well, that's not the purpose of the audit. I mean, the purpose of the audit is to make sure that you've spent your money properly and according to law.
But that will come up in the budget process. Absolutely, yeah.
But Roger, one thing new in the audit was unfunded liabilities, pension liabilities, that was new in this year's audit. So the city received a theoretical calculation, I guess more than theoretical, actual calculation of our unfunded pension liabilities. And I think it was 35 million.
Yeah, yeah.
Significant amount.
It's a, it's an amount that nobody anywhere in the state can afford.
But that part is new, Mark, yeah.
Yes.
And that's why there was a slight chance.
Right, right. But it's, and that was part of the audit this time.
That was part of the audit, right.
Yeah, because... Yeah, sorry.
No.
Paul, I just didn't, I didn't see if we were voting on it, so I didn't review...
Well, do you want to wait? That's probably...
So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, or? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
Okay, now let's go back and let's, let's vote on the last report. We're doing everything that, upside down, yeah, I like moving things around. Keep everybody on their toes, stay awake. You've got to stay awake to follow what we're doing here. Okay, that was a great report, and we should probably accept your report, shouldn't we? So, who?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We didn't.
Oh, I apologize.
It's the one you, it was me. I was supposed to do that, and I didn't do it.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Okay, there's a motion.
Because it was a great report.
It was, it was a great report. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion on that? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
Okay, we're almost to the end. Finance Committee report on dispersments.
Report of dispersments, February 9th, 2019 through February 28th, 2019. General Fund, $158,550.17. Tower Park Fund, $1,249. Public Works KDOT Fund, $20,329.50. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, $1,140.88. CBD Revitalization, $1,616.53. Police and Fire Pension Fund, $1,481.57. Total, $184,367.65. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants numbered 5251 through 5333 be approved and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks through our payment. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Mr. Cameron, and...
Motion to approve.
Sir, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right. Ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Ordinance 002, 2019.
This is a summary of ordinance 002, 2019, and ordinance amending ordinance number 012, 2016, known as the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, adopted on December 19th, 2016, by amending the smoking policy and adding terminal leave policy and vacation carryover policy to the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. An employee unable to work due to work-related injury would be eligible to carry over leave time on a prior basis. Certain qualified employees may transfer some terminal leave into the city's 401A Deferred Compensation Match Program. Smoking is prohibited activity in all departments, offices, and meeting rooms of city buildings.
All right.
Ron, just a quick question on that. We had made a suggestion to also ask about not smoking in front of the building. Is that added in this, or is that just a request?
Well, it's, it's actually, it'll be a practice.
Gotcha.
And we've already accommodated that, so, yeah, that's a good point, but it didn't really need to be stated that way, but, yes, we've accomplished that.
Very good.
This says approved. Is this a first reading?
It's a second reading.
It's a second reading, okay, this is second reading, so entertain a motion.
I vote to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, the next is ordinance 003, the Uniform Landlord-Tenant Act, which is the first reading.
Resolution, ordinance number 003, 2019, an ordinance of the city of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, adopting the Uniform Residential Landlord-Tenant Act, whereas the adoption of the Uniform Residential Landlord and Tenant Act provides landlords and tenants with defined provisions as their relationship in rental property. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, Section 1, that the Uniform Residential Landlord and Tenant Act, known as URLTA, is codified in KRS 383.505 through KRS 383.715, is hereby adopted by reference and made applicable to properties within the city of Fort Thomas.
Right, that's the first reading. We have a resolution, R01, 2019.
Resolution, R01, 2019, a resolution authorizing and approving a memorandum of understanding to create and implement strategic solutions for the US-27 corridor between Newport and the levee through the Highland Heights Business District anchored by Northern Kentucky University's Town Center Project.
Move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, and one executive order, E02, 2019.
Executive Order, E02, 2019, an executive order appointing Jeff Beazle into the Northern Kentucky District Board of Health as a designate for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky.
That happens when you miss a meeting.
What's that?